And the second is by Commissioner Claus. Please register your votes. We're having technical, uh, here we go. And that motion passes five to zero. We'll move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Are there any requests to speak forms?
Yeah.
No?
I have one. For a specific item.
Okay, it's for a specific item on the agenda, or is it?
On the agenda.
It's not? Oh, okay. Then come on up to the podium. That's okay.
We passed by.
I appreciate you speaking up. Please-
Yeah, my name's Linda Trim. I live in Capistrano Beach, and I have a neighbor who's had years of a project that is very destructive to my property and my value, safety. We're on a slope, and I've addressed it through the years with a lot of different people here in the city. Everybody's done a great job, but I'm at this point where I feel like nothing's happening. I had a meeting with, actually John, you were there, with several people, and I was asked to bring in pictures to prove some of the issues involved. And it's been hard for me to get in touch back with people. I've gone through so many different levels, so I felt like I had to come to the meeting to explain, and I've never talked like this in front of people. So if I have three minutes, I'm just gonna let you know that the neighbor stripped the property bare. He pulled down a retaining wall of my neighbor. He broke up my driveway. He's brought in illegal fill dirt. Took him three days to do it. I called Angela quite a few years ago. This started in 2009. It's completely bare. And I'm worried about the rain, number one, but the thing that bothers me the most is I came home, I'm a nurse, and I came home and footings were dug in fill dirt. There's been no compaction other than a little bit of rain, but I think this is an issue here where I have to start making decisions whether I get, you know, legally involved with this. I don't want to, but I was hoping that you guys could somehow either put it on an agenda so we can finish it, or someone with some kind of knowledge tell me what to do next as a homeowner. Because I think it's gone on way too long.
I can comment, so when you finish, I-
Can you comment and then give me one more?
Sure, sure, yeah.
Okay.
And Ms. Trim, Linda, I promised that I would look into the photographs that you did send, and I haven't had a chance to do that yet, but Ms. Trim has submitted a number of complaints regarding the neighbor. Those complaints have been investigated. City staff did not find any violations at this point, although Ms. Trim has provided some additional information, and I personally promised Ms. Trim that I would look into this additional information if she provided, and if there was sufficient evidence for us to determine that there was something that was done without proper permits, then we would, code enforcement and city staff would manage that pursuant to the code. But at this point, we haven't found anything that is not done without permits, but again, there's new information. We will be looking into it. In fact, I've talked to our building official, Mark Sutton, and he and I are going to be meeting in the next couple of days to go over all the information that you have submitted to us, and that once we complete that investigation, then we'll be able to answer.
Okay, that's great. And then one, can I just, do I have any time left at all? I just wanna let you know that there were no permits taken out since 2009, and that's why several times, and even permits ran out because he was red-tagged not to do any building. And the meeting was three weeks ago. I'm concerned, what I'd like to see happen, if you could, in your meeting, number one, I'd like to have drains uncovered. I have a 250-foot driveway I share with this guy. If we get El Nino, I'm really worried because it's complete dirt. I'd like drains and some kind of water. I'd like, I'd like you to know that fill dirt was not taken out, and I have lots of more pictures to show you if you want. That was illegally brought in also. And that meeting was, like I said, three weeks ago. Can we get a time where maybe you could get back to me, or someone could?
So if I can just interrupt at this point, I thank you for your comments, and I will work with John and Mark Sutton to make sure that we get back to you in a timely manner. I want to remind the commission to please not comment on this, as it's a potential code enforcement violation. So this isn't the really appropriate body, but thank you for your time, and we will certainly-
Yeah, just let me know what to do.
Back with you, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Trim, for coming by and bringing that up to us. All right, there are no more public comments? All right. So we'll move on to the consent calendar, and we have no items on the consent calendar, and we are now at public hearings. Item two, for coastal development permit, CDP 15-0011, to allow the construction of a new single-family dwelling on a vacant lot containing a coastal bluff at 24682 El Camino Capistrano. Ms. Luna Reynosa, is there a report on item two?
Yes, thank you. And Evan Langdon will give the staff report for this item.
Thank you. And there it is, your presentation for the items up on your screens. As you mentioned, a coastal development permit to allow the construction of a new single-family dwelling on a presently vacant lot. The subject property is located overlooking Dana Point Harbor. Again, a vacant lot contains a coastal bluff, as defined in the Dana Point specific plan. Surrounding neighborhood is primarily single-family dwellings, although a mixture of uses, but primarily single-family dwellings. If the lot looks familiar to some of you upon the dais, you reviewed a coastal development permit for this property a little more than a year ago, and for a similar scope of work, in fact, a nearly identical scope of work. The owner elected not to go forward with that coastal development permit, withdrew it, and so now was resubmitted for a new coastal development permit for, again, similar scope of work, single-family dwelling. A shot of the property as it more or less looks today, minimal landscaping, again, the coastal bluff and the ocean further in the distance. The, well, before I go into details about the home, we talk about coastal bluffs and some of the requirements that go along with such a property. The coastal bluff is defined in Dana Point specific plan and our zoning code as a, essentially a cliff, the toe of which is either currently subject to, or in the past was subject to coastal erosion. You could more or less think of it as a cliff, the base of which, again, was at one point, either now or at one point in the past, was subject to waves hitting it, and so again, eroding it. Coastal bluffs are considered sensitive habitat area per our general plan, and so they carry very specific, very stringent development and design requirements, quite a number of limitations as to what you can do. The crux of those standards is to protect life and property, and then to manage, protect the habitat, which includes native plants, animal life, and so on. So among the more pertinent standards, it's a setback, or is a setback, from the edge of that bluff. We figure out where the edge is with a geotechnical report prepared by a qualified expert. That individual comes up with a purported edge of bluff, and based, of course, on our definitions and our code standards, submits that to our own geotechnical staff. They work, or they go back and forth, then eventually come to a consensus as to where the edge is. From there, then there is a minimum setback for all structures. In no case can that setback be less than 25 feet, but as is the case with our subject property, it can be a deeper setback, and depending on the unique topography, the unique history of any individual property. Among other things, they'll look at erosion in the past, and then project or predict future erosion of the property. They'll figure out where the factor of safety line is, the point at which the property goes from being unstable to grossly stable in other standards, put it into the proverbial blender, and come up with a total setback from the edge of bluff. And in the case of our property here, that setback was decided to be 30 feet, or the appropriate and safe setback was decided to be 30 feet. So within that space, very little can be done. No deepened footings of any kind, low walls, no more than about 18 inches in height, and again, with very shallow footings are permitted, but otherwise, really, it's just hardscape, concrete, and so forth, and landscaping native to California and utterly drought tolerant. And that means no irrigation, so to establish and plant, hand watering, et cetera, et cetera. And the goal, again, is to make sure that we keep that sensitive habitat area preserved, and then as erosion occurs over time, protect the buildings that are constructed on the site. So 30 feet again for our property here, and you can see the yellow arrow, and then nothing closer than that, really. This is an infinity swimming pool, and that is as close as any development gets to the edge of bluff. So the dwelling itself, that's proposed, two stories, a total 7,503 square feet, and then an additional 834 square feet worth of four-car garage. It would have five bedrooms and comprise two stories. The architecture, I'll show you the second floor. In fact, I'm sorry, let me explain these. Because of the way it was rendered, a very long sheet of paper, a very long floor plan, to go back a sheet, first floor, if it'll let me. So El Camino Capistrano, the street would be at the upper right of your page, and then the bluff or the ocean would be at the bottom left, so the garage at the front, entryway, and so forth, and then continuing on to the back. Five bedrooms, also some accessory rooms, a gym, office, and so on. And then the second floor, containing most of the living spaces for the structure. As I was starting to say, the architecture is modern, so stone, wood, and steel, a very boxy design, as you can see, flat rooftop. The structure would be no more than 24 feet, that's the requirement per the Dana Point specific plan. This would be the rear view, so the ocean at the bottom right of your screen. And then finally, some conceptual renderings, giving idea of the colors and the material mix. This, of course, the front of the house, and the rear of the house. The project complies with all standards of the Dana Point specific plan, so the aforementioned setbacks from the edge of bluff, side yard, front yard, overall height, lot coverage, et cetera, and so findings can be made to support the request for the coastal development permit. In that being the case, staff recommends you approve the project subject to the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? Vice Chair?
Yes, thanks, Chairwoman O'Connor. Evan, a couple of things. On the floor plan for the first floor, if you go to, I'm not sure which sheet that is.
A2.
A2, dang, thank you. A2, on the north first-floor section, is a reference to an office, and my concern with this is it certainly looks like a bedroom. Being the fifth or the sixth bedroom, the parking would become a problem under our code. So I'm assuming there's a building code process, or building plan process that deals with this, but could you help me with that?
Sure. The plans identify it as an office, and as rendered, it doesn't have, or doesn't meet the criteria to be qualified as a bedroom. That said, it's, because it's been designed that way, because it is officially, per the plans, an office, it's going to have to be constructed as an office. It'll be inspected as an office once it's issued building permits. And so if it turns into anything else, and specifically a bedroom, which as you pointed out, would trip the need for a third covered parking space, and not in a tandem arrangement as you see here, but an actual side-by-side parking space, again, built in any other way than what's approved on these plans, then it'd become a good enforcement matter at worst.
Perfect, thank you. And then sheet L1 or A0, it may be in other places, but there's a specific note to a deviation request on those sheets. I didn't see any deviation.
That is just a nod to the code requirements. The zoning code allows a minimum setback of 25 feet, where you can meet certain criteria, where you can prove that the site is geotechnically stable, and so on. It's called a deviation-
Okay.
-in the code. So as I mentioned earlier, they, the analysis of the property resulted in a total setback, a final setback of 30 feet from the edge of bluff. And so really, that's just a nod to the minimum code requirement.
Got it. So you're not really deviating from the code?
No, no, it's called a deviation in the code.
Got it. I think that was it. Yep, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. So, just to clarify, a couple of things. On that sheet A0, where it says bluff top setback 40 feet, that's calling out the, as designed, that's not the required.
Well, that would be the other default standpoint. There's a lot of information there. The basic setback, the default, or by right, setback from the edge of bluff in this part of the city is 40 feet. So that's the standard setback. If you can prove, again, that the site is stable enough, et cetera, et cetera, you can go to as little as 25 feet. But then, through the course of analysis, if a different setback comes in, or is determined to be appropriate, that is your final setback. So those two numbers, 40 feet and 25, those are just the standard setbacks, but the analysis will dictate what the final inappropriate setback is for the property, in this case, 30 feet.
And I'll just add, in no case can it be less than 25. But if the geotechnical report says that the minimum it could be is 30, then they're allowed to have 30 through this deviation process. There is, there was originally a geotechnical study done for all of the bluffs of Dana Point, and it was a very, let's say, broad study, not site-specific. And so in the, to be very conservative, they assigned certain setbacks, sometimes 25, sometimes 40, in some cases even 60, and said that this would be absolutely safe if you went to this setback, but we will allow you to go to a lesser setback if it can be supported from a geotechnical standpoint.
Okay, so prior to this, then, they've done some geotechnical proof-up that has satisfied planning about that reduced setback?
That's correct, and we actually have a very involved third-party review process of all the geotechnical reports that they provide us, to make sure that they're doing things properly.
Okay, thank you. To build on Vice Chairman Nelson's question or inquiry regarding a bedroom versus office, you said that, well, it's shown as an office, and it doesn't qualify as a bedroom, so what would the, what would the criteria be that makes it a bedroom versus an office? Because it looks like a bedroom to me.
Good question. It's a closet. The building code says the addition of closets turns it into a bedroom. Bathrooms don't make a change, or qualify, is the change. But closets, because they're the criteria. They identify in their plan of-
Filing cabinets in that area-
Right.
-and no door, so it's just a, an empty space, an alcove. But again, if something were to change in the course of construction through the inspection process, and once building permits are issued, if it becomes a closet, and the inspectors, of course, know what that looks like, they'll flag it, it'll change the nature of the design, and potentially trigger the need for that third parking space.
So if they put a door and a shelf and pole in there, then they have to redesign the-
Correct.
But if they fail to-
Then it was built according to plan, and it's not a closet, not a bedroom.
I was under the impression, and maybe I'm wrong, but that the bedroom was defined in the code as basically a space other than a dedicated kitchen or bathroom, or is that not the case?
It's, the closet is the trigger. Just as with the addition of a kitchen, it makes a studio or accessory space into a second dwelling unit. That's, that's the singular criteria that changes the nature of the space, turns it into a bedroom.
Okay. One other question. In the background, I see that this basically is coming up for reentitlement based on taking away the offer to dedicate of an easement.
Yes.
What, was there a document or something that drove that initial, that condition in the first place?
Yes.
And can you elaborate on that?
Sure. The, the property is located in, or is subject to standards, you could say, in a document called the Dana Point specific plan. And it's an early 80s document, encompasses most of this part of Dana Point, used to include our town center, for example. That document has as a criteria for all coastal development permits, the requirement that you place, or the condition that you exact a trail easement, or more specifically, an offer to dedicate to the city, an easement that eventually will become a trail. So the original approval included that condition of approval, included that requirement, and once the owner became aware of it, he objected, and so consulting with our own attorney, they agreed that it was illegal, that it was something that's not appropriate, that we shouldn't be applying that exaction, and so we withdrew it with this new submittal.
And I'll just add that since the adoption of this plan, there has been court cases that have shown that there is really no nexus for being able to take somebody's property for this purpose. And so really, the court and the attorneys have said that due to the court's decisions, we can no longer apply this in this particular case.
Okay, so on a go-forward basis, the next coastal bluff development, the proposal, application that comes in, are you guys not going to impose that condition, or you kind of have to because it's in the specific plan, and then if they object, you'll take it out?
I'll answer that. It's always very fact-specific to the circumstances of the site, so we'll always do the analysis. I can't tell you how we will approach every single one in the future. It'll be based on the specific facts of that site, and we will determine our approach based on those facts.
Thank you. That's all for me.
All right. Do you have questions? Commissioner Claus?
Yeah. Couple of things here. First of all, I always thought the definition for bedroom was it had a bed. I guess it isn't necessary. Well, you learn something all the time, okay. The, I may have missed this in the, in the beginning. The roof on this is a flat roof. Are there any particular, it says with, with elements. What were the elements that they're proposing on this flat roof?
There is a chimney, for example. There are, it's wrapped with a parapet, so they, certain, just architectural elements. Really, I probably, when I wrote that, it probably was a nod to the chimney, first and foremost. But otherwise, the roof is substantially flat. If you're asking if there's a roof deck or anything of that sort, then, then no. It's just a flat roof, and then whatever equipment goes along with that.
Well, okay, so which brings up my next question, which is that being a fairly small space, and now we're adding something on a roof that I think would be somewhat significant, but there's no, no issues with that?
With the chimney?
Yeah, I mean-
No, the chimney's, it's a lot, I mean, I'll have to go through the building plan check process, the building permit process, to make sure it's safe and built according to code, but, but no, chimney would be permitted.
Okay. I don't, I don't know the neighborhood well enough to know how many other chimneys there are there. All right. See, I thought there was one more thing I had here. I'm not seeing it now, so I can always come back.
All right. I have a few questions. Well, Commissioner Claus and I were, approved the other project on this a lot a year ago, and so I'm curious about that easement as well. Now, what, it was to, you know, string some properties along to have a pathway, so what happens to those other homes? I mean, do they still, are they still bound by that easement, or?
The, at the moment, it's a bit of a hodgepodge, a long, um, bluff there. Some properties have made the offer to dedicate the easement to the city, and the city's accepted that dedication, and so there actually is a recorded easement across the property, a piece of what could become a trail. Others haven't made the dedication. Some homes were built before the Dana Point specific plan came about, and so the requirement didn't exist. Again, it's a bit of a mixture at the moment. So each of those offers to dedicate have a 21-year shelf life to them. In fact, in some cases, that has come and gone, where they made the offer to dedicate, the city didn't accept the dedication for one reason or another, and that has since expired. So, so for those where the easement exists, the easement remains in perpetuity. For those who are still in the middle of that 21-year timeframe to dedicate to the city, it's up to the city to decide if they want to accept it and dedicate the easement. And again, in other cases, it hasn't happened yet. So it's, it's a bit of a mixture at the moment.
And I think the important thing to note, which was mentioned earlier by John, is that when the Dana Point specific plan was adopted, it was prior to this court case, or court cases that have deemed that the nexus doesn't exist. So by nature of that, there would be properties where it was in place and under a plan that required it, but, you know, we legally cannot require something that's illegal. So it's, you know, an interesting situation.
So are, is, are the easements recorded on specific lots?
As Evan mentioned, on some of them, yes.
All right.
And do you, just looking backward at what's already been done, my understanding is that pretty much none of the other property owners actually challenged the condition. So if they wanted to now, it would probably not be timely. I think a lot of them have been imposed for many decades at this point. So if your question is about, are we going to go back and have to extinguish existing easements and things like that, we're definitely not there yet.
Okay, great. And then it's interesting, this bedroom versus office conundrum here, because, I mean, technically, that file cabinet could very well be yanked out and become a closet, and after the home is built and, you know, the inspector is gone, it's a bedroom. Or even if it's not this homeowner, it's the next one after they sell. And so basically, we've got no enforcement over, over this?
Not at all. In fact, we have, we will have a stamped set of plans. It'll be contained in the record. So if a conversion were to occur, and it came to our attention, we would have the ability to pull the plans, the building permit, of course, and, and see what was permitted, and it could be, the owner could be compelled to return it to what it was permitted for, which was a closet, or I'm sorry, for an office, rather. Pardon me.
Or they can provide another parking spot.
Or they can provide the other parking space, correct.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Anyone?
I'm gonna follow up on that with you. Actually, I believe you and I have been down this road with this property, I think, three separate times, and each time, it has kind of been a nightmare, but slowly but surely, over a period of time, you know, there's something to be said for tenacity here. I think that it has finally come to the part where I think it, I think they've done the absolute best that they can over, over the course of time here, because I know that they've started, and it didn't go, and then somebody, they got it, they got it approved, and then they never did anything with it, and it's just kind of shuffled along. It's a great location. I, I think that what they've proposed is reasonable on it, and I don't have a problem with the easement. After all these years on the easement, I mean, I don't, I haven't seen anybody fussing about it or all that, and, and, you know, I think it's kind of, you know, time to just let that go and-
Okay, I'll, I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Do we have any requests to speak? Yes, we do. Okay. Our first speaker is Sherman Stacy. Please state your name and city of residence.
Yes, Madam Chairman, Sherman Stacy. I live in Newport Beach. I'm the attorney for the property owner. We've reviewed all of the conditions and agreed to abide by the conditions that are set forth in your proposed resolution. We think that this resolves the issue with regard to the easement, which is why I was brought in on it to, to look at that and see how they procedurally would have to go forward in order to be able to remove it. Making a new application was the manner in which it was necessary to do it. That's why you get to see it yet again, and I hope that you will take the action tonight to approve it. I believe there may be some comments from a neighbor concerning a wall, and I'd like an opportunity, and I've discussed this with the staff, I don't think that we are in dispute with what the neighbor's request will be, but I'll wait to listen to it and let you know after I've heard it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stacy. Bob Thiel.
Good evening, Chairman O'Connor and Planning Commissioners. My name is Bob Thiel, and I'm a resident of Dana Point, and the neighbor. Next door to the proposed project on the east side is a property that's owned by G&amp;H Holdings, and I've known them for a long time, and when they saw that they got the notice for the project, they asked me if I'd look at the plans and give them any advice, one way or the other, about the project, and I did. And I told them it's basically the same house that was approved about a year ago, and back then, I told them that I thought the house was a nice design, and it was a good addition to the neighborhood, and I live across the street and a couple houses removed, so I know the neighborhood very well, and I think the house will be a good addition. I did, however, study the plans. I downloaded them on eight and a half, or 11 by 17, and the print is really tiny, so I did determine that the wall, property line wall that they're proposing on the east side, is going to be viewed as eight-foot-tall property line wall. And I know- And I know those sections of the codes and know that that's not an appropriate height and that it exceeds a six-foot maximum. So I met with Evan and discussed the matter with Evan. And the resolution that I would like to see is, in, in fact, there's some spot elevations on the drawings that show what the top of the wall is. And when you do the subtractions, you determine, knowing the topography on both sides of the wall, that the G&amp;H Holdings property is eight feet below the top of the wall. And that would exceed the maximum height by two feet. So what I would like to see is the planning commission take these comments and go ahead and approve the project, but indicate that the coastal development permit drawings that do get stamped, approved, that those drawings would make the corrections so that there wouldn't be an error in construction once this gets to the building department. Sometimes the building department doesn't know what the zoning code is all about, and there could be arguments made out in the field that, yes, we'll make the building eight feet tall because there's a spot elevation that says we can make it eight feet tall. So I'd like to see the plans corrected. I don't want to delay the project. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thiel. Do we have, maybe John can address that issue? I guess I, I won't close the public hearing yet, but do you have?
I think, I think with both the applicant and the neighbor agreeing, and if the applicant agrees to adding a condition of approval, that the height of the wall would not be higher than six feet relative to the neighbor's grade.
It's, it's my understanding that that is what the code requires in any event.
Well, you can exceed it through a public hearing process, but it's a discretionary decision.
Not intending to ask you to exercise that discretion. And we will accept that the height, hall, the height of the wall will be not more than six feet above the neighbor's grade. And recognizing there's a grade differential between the properties, we don't need the neighbor to look at an eight-foot wall. He can look at a six-foot wall. I guess we'll look over a four-foot wall.
So with that being the case, I just recommend that the approval includes an added condition such that the, the wall to the east, correct?
Yes.
Shall be no higher than six feet from the neighbor's grade.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stacy and Mr. Thiel. All right. Now I'll close the public hearing, and I will bring this back to the commissioners for comment. Anyone want to start out?
Please, yes, thank you, Chairwoman Connor. I, I love the architecture here. I think everybody knows that, that I like modern architecture. I though will say that, and I'll direct this at the applicant, that I am concerned about the, this office, because when you go out to the site, it's advertised as a six-bedroom unit. So I would just caution you from, or your client, from moving forward with a project that's not compliant with, with what they've said they're going to do. I'm not inclined to decline, to not approve a project, but, you know, just because it says it's an office doesn't necessarily mean it's an office, I guess. Other than that issue, I would, I'm in full support of the project and, and think it's a nice use of the land and look forward to seeing that actually developed out.
And are you also in favor of the condition, of the added condition of the, okay. Commissioner Murphy?
I agree. I, I read it all and looked at it all, and I think it is a good project, particularly for that remaining plot that's there, up there on the bluff, bluffs. And so I think we should go ahead with the caveat of the oral agreement between council and with the city staff that, that wall will be at six feet. And I think everybody's in agreement, but I just wanted to put that in there.
Thank you. Commissioner McCann?
I think the architecture's great. I, I'm very happy that the applicant fought the easement requirement. So, and I'm, I'm sorry that they had to do that and incur that expense and delay to, to get rid of it. But I'm, I'm very pleased that they did that and, you know, recognized the, the legal precedents that had been set. So with that, I'm in support of the project.
Commissioner Claus?
I'm in support of the project. I do have some concerns about something that was said earlier, which I began to think about, which is that we are expecting El Ninos next year. And generally, the weather in where, where we live comes out the way they say it's going to be coming out generally nicely. The El Ninos are not nice. I don't know how, how many of us here have, have been through El Ninos. I've been through like three or four of them, and they are brutal. And, and I'm realizing that the, I haven't had too much being said here about the fact that it is on a, on a bluff and could, with a severe El Nino, very easily not just have some damage, but enormous damage to, to the area and to the harbor. So would like to hear somebody speak to that and turn off whatever's...
I think your three minutes were up. Mayor Culpo. Perhaps Evan can explain that, address the Commissioner Claus's concerns about the bluff during the El Nino and during construction and...
Sure. Well, if your concern, if I understand it correctly, is that the, all of the rain that we might be getting would somehow cause the, the bluff to erode more quickly than usual or might hamper construction as it goes on. Well, I can say that there's something called a best management practice that's required of all construction projects. It'll, among other things, require that the sandbags be placed, that equipment be staged in certain ways, that the, the site be generally protected from, from the elements and from the activity, the construction activity itself. So as long as those are adhered to, that's probably about the best people can do, other than just watching for the weather, of course, and avoiding, you know, most torrential of rain when construction goes on. But, but, you know, I can say that, you know, there are steps that are required, there are procedures that have to be followed when construction goes on for any property. And again, they're called BMPs, best management practices. And through those, we, we try to mitigate as best we can, you know, any potential damage from the elements as construction goes on.
The, I might make a possible suggestion here. I don't know what timeframe the, the applicants have on this, but if indeed they have a year or so to get everything done, I might suggest that they sort of wait until we see what happens with our weather over the, over the next year, rather than, rather than risk what might happen.
All right. My comments are, you know, I'm usually not in favor of modern architecture, but I have to say this one is actually done well. It, it looks very nice. I also have no problems with the change, with the added condition. So if someone would like to make motion with that condition, that would be appropriate? Anyone? No. Why don't we wait?
This, this room has gremlins.
I guess. All right. You know, I'll, I'll take, I'll do it. I'll make the motion, approving coastal development permit CDP 15 dash 0011 to allow the construction of a new single-family dwelling on a vacant lot containing a coastal bluff at 24682 El Camino Capistrano. But I'd like to add a condition that the wall to the east shall be no higher than six feet. So I made a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner McCann's made the second. Please register your votes. And, there we go. Wait. Okay. Pending. It says two votes pending, so...
When I hit mine, it flashes and then it...
That's good. Leave it there. Okay. And then, flashing's good.
We're all flashing down here.
We are, okay.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. There we go. If passes, five to zero.
It's its first day of work.
You know, we had one day off last week, and we've lost our, our mojo. There you go. Thank you.
No, I'm saying the machine lost its mojo.
Item three, tentative parcel map, TPM 14 dash 0001 and site development permit SDP 14 dash 0010 for the subdivision of one vacant lot into two lots. We don't see very many of those. In conjunction with the construction of two detached residential duplexes on each of the new lots at 26371 Villa Canion. Is there a staff report?
Yes, and Evan Lingan will give this staff report as well.
Thank you. And the presentation's up. As you mentioned, a parcel map and a site development permit to allow the subdivision of one lot into two, and then the construction of two duplexes, so four total units. Lot is presently vacant and located in Capistrano Beach, on your vicinity map here on the screen. The property is a steeply sloping lot with some scattered vegetation, fronting Villa Canion, and then downslope the on-ramp to the five freeway heading south. The, oh, explain some of the views here, as in get your bearings. Top left picture here, this would be Villa Canion, and then looking toward the subject property. The shot at the top right, this would be about two-thirds of the way down the property and looking up toward the street. And then the shots on the left and right are more or less standing about midpoint on the property and looking, of course, toward the freeway, toward the north part of our city beyond. So again, one lot at the moment, one single lot, and then proposed to be subdivided into two. Parcel one, there would be about eighty-five hundred square feet, and parcel two, just under eighteen thousand square feet, and arranged as you can see here. The larger of the two, parcel two, would be a flag lot, the pole of which is this long and slender portion, arranged such that it allows access, allows for the construction of a driveway from Villa Canion at the right and on toward the interior of the property here. The zoning, of course, is residential duplex 14, and so allows for the construction of up to two units on each of those lots. And I'll show those arranged as such, units one through four. And then to go through the, the four units, some units one and two, if you look to the right here, you can see Villa Canion at the bottom, and then the first two units on parcel number one. Those two units are more or less mirrors of one another, with differences more or less limited to materials, surfacing, and so forth. Both units would have three bedrooms, be two stories, and contain a roof deck, the access and the little person there you can see on, on the, on the screen. Of course, unit one at the top and unit two at the bottom. Again, you can see more or less the, the same floor plan, similar architectural styles. Floor plans, again, are more or less mirrors of one another, again, three bedrooms, a two-car garage, two stories. And then units three and four, the downslope properties here, again, more or less the same style of architecture, but different than units one and two, a more modern design, primarily stucco exterior, a flat rooftop. No roof decks proposed, but large decks toward the rear of each floor plan and facing downslope, two stories. The property, I should mention, because it is a steeply sloping lot, and specifically at a steepness of 20% or more, our code defines it as a hillside condition. And that definition gives you potential for greater story count or greater height and/or greater height. Two stories where potentially three are allowed, or two are proposed, I should say, but they're using the extra height. And so these structures would be just under 29 feet tall, which is the maximum allowed for a hillside property and with this kind of roof, with a flat rooftop. Different views, unit four. Two stories, again, just to be clear, this is crawl space at the lowest level, and then two levels, two floors above. Again, the floor plan, similar to one and two, three bedrooms, sort of a great room concept, I should say, kitchen, living room, and so forth, with living spaces, or bedrooms, rather, on the upper floors. The site plan again at the bottom, and then landscaping. Much care and time were taken to provide new landscaping for the property, and specifically for those that are downslope, for units three and four. And those would be the taller of the four buildings on the property, and so having somewhat blank walls and facing downslope. So to soften the appearance, to screen those structures, quite a bit of new landscaping and a variety in type that maturity will grow, and again, provide screening of those, those, you know, less adorned elements of the building, but new landscaping all throughout. In fact, while I'm here to walk through the site plan a little bit, the aforementioned driveway leading down the pole for lot number two and leading to units three and four. Duplexes are required to provide a two-car garage for each unit, and then an additional parking space, covered or uncovered, for each of the two units. And so of the four units, the two duplexes, there are four additional parking spaces here and here and here and here for each units, guest parking perhaps. Setbacks, the both buildings comply with all of their zoning envelope requirements, so aforementioned heights, setbacks, lot coverage, the landscaping minimum, and so on. The, so, I should say too, the, of course, the lots themselves, they have a minimum area requirement, minimum dimensions, and both properties meet those requirements, along with providing appropriate access and so forth. And the projects, as part of their standard review, have been looked at by trash collection, and so, of course, they can be served there. They were sent to the Orange County Fire Authority and with conceptual approval of the general site layout, and so they can be served by that agency. So again, the, the projects have been found to comply with all standards for both the subdivision itself and then for the, the two duplexes that are proposed. And so as with the last project, because we can make the findings to recommend for approval, staff does so, subject to the resolution. Thank you.
Do the commissioners have any questions of staff? Commissioner Murphy?
Essentially, even though these are called potential duplexes or maybe condos, it really ends up being four individual structures, correct?
Yes. And in fact, thank you for saying that. Forgive me for not mentioning it. The, the subdivision is just of land. So at the moment, it's one lot, the proposal list is subdivided into two lots, but there is no airspace subdivision. So they're, they're not proposed to be constructed as condominiums. So that would require a different map, that would require a different process of review, a different kind of subdivision, different ownership arrangement. So these two units on each of the two new lots could be rented, but they would be under one owner at the moment. They couldn't be individually owned, as you would with a condominium.
Okay.
But as, to your point, though, about there being standalone structures, yes, they're both detached, all four units are detached from one another. And in appearance, of course, they, they seem to be single-family dwellings, even though by design and legally speaking, in fact, they're duplexes.
And it seems that that kind of configuration is not consistent with what is normally seen up there on the bluffs of Capistrano Beach. When one drives down the freeway and gets off at PCH one or Los Ramblas and you look up at the bluffs, you, you do see duplexes and you do see condos, but generally, they're two units, I mean, two units in one building. And so you might have them side by side, so they each have a little bit of the view. So I, I don't know, is this unusual to permit four different structures on this type of lot?
It would be, it's, it's unusual in that the lot itself is larger than most of the lots around it. In fact, the dimensions are almost double the size of most of its neighboring properties there along Villa Canion. In the distant past, it may have been two lots that were perhaps merged together to become the one lot that is, is there today. So is it unusual? No, in, in that it meets the minimum requirements to be subdivided into two lots again? Again, I don't know if that's, it's past history, but it, it meets the minimum requirements to be subdivided into two. And so per the code, you can fit two units onto each of those two lots. So it wouldn't be unusual, I suppose. Again, it meets the code requirements.
I, I might just add, I understand your question. I mean, typically, you look at a duplex and it looks, it's two units in one building. But the, the code's definition of a duplex means two living units on one lot. So it doesn't, it could be two separate structures, or it could be one structure either, meets the definition of a duplex.
And given that the slope, you know, the bluff, the slope, is a steep slope as you're going down that piece of property, and that's a long piece, and that's a long piece before you, if you stand there and you, before you get down to PCH one. I can't conceptualize how far... I can't conceptualize how far down these plans go on that property.
Like I say, at its closest point, unit four, which is the most down slope of the four units, that would be right about thirteen and a half feet away. Again, its closest point, but because it's not a uniform rectangle, so at its furthest point, it's not clear on the copy, but the setback is noted and it's quite a distance, it's twenty or thirty or more feet away from the rear property line.
And Evan, if you want to refer to her to sheet A1, it shows, I think, a good picture.
Is this the street?
We have the, yeah, we have the minimum setback on sheet A1, but the, it's the site plan that actually notes the...
Or maybe the vicinity map, aerial photo?
I think the site elevation, which shows the flat part of the property with the slope and the property lines, but I'm sure there's multiple sheets that would be helpful.
I guess what I'm asking is, how close to PCH one is the, is the furthest point of unit four, is it unit four?
Yeah.
Going to be? I mean, yeah, how far down the slope? Are we looking at structures just climbing down the mountain or what?
No, no, I thank you, I understand what you're asking. No, it's quite a distance away from PCH and from the on-ramp. It is mid-hundreds of feet away perhaps from the slope or from the on-ramp down below, quite a distance away, yeah. So no, they're, while they are going down the hill, it's nowhere near the road or the freeway below.
Yeah, and actually, I'm not sure if you understand, it's not near PCH. This is above Camino Las Ramblas, which is the on-ramp goes to the five, okay.
Yeah, because when you get off at Los Ramblas and PCH one, they split, but you're still sort of looking, you're looking at this property from either one of those exits.
You are.
Yes.
Right.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
If you look at the vicinity map, aerial photo, supporting document number two, that might help you get a better visual. It's about three pages before all the plans.
In fact, if I can add too, on the, I was hoping, one of the copies, the tentative parcel map, the, at its furthest point from the rear property line, it's eighty feet to the duplex and that's just to the property line. So the road or the on-ramp down below is another, you know, again, a hundred or more feet away from that, so it's quite a distance away.
So is it like halfway down the hill, maybe? Is that would be the furthest point for this project?
About.
About halfway down the hill, yeah.
Way down the hill. And as far as setting up the actual grading, I'm trying to figure out, when you look at, if you're on Canyon and you look at this property, there's a rise, you know, and then there's almost like there was a plot there before, a flat area and then maybe one down below, maybe that was built, I mean, you know, dredged up or something else. So, but on either side, there are single family homes. There's two on one side and I don't know, there's more than two on the other side. So this would be kind of a big jump in terms of this kind of construction with four structures there.
It would be, it'd be a change in what's there now or different than what's around it, but the structures on either side would be legal non-conforming structures. Again, the zoning for the neighborhood is four duplexes and provided you can meet all the design and development criteria. So while yes, it'd be a change and different again than what's around it, but it's in line with the zoning, it's what the zoning envisions for the property.
Okay, let me see what my other question was. Will the units four and three be considerably lower level from the two top units as they go down the hill?
They will be at a lower elevation, yes. In fact, there's about a one-hundred-foot drop between the bottom of the property and Via Canyon. And again, the units three and four are about two-thirds of the way down the hill, so there is quite a differential between the two properties. But to answer your question, what was, in what way, how does it?
What is one likely to see from Canyon if one drives up there? What will they see when these structures are completed?
They will see only units one and two. So those are more or less at the level of the street of Via Canyon. The other properties, or the buildings, rather, are down slope and so you wouldn't see them at all from Via Canyon. Or very little of them, if anything.
Hold on, let me find that last question.
In fact, if I may point you back to the site plan, the very first sheet, there is a site elevation, BB. You can see the differential, what I mentioned, the different elevation of units one and two versus three and four down slope. It's at the bottom left, first page in the plan set. So if you imagine Via Canyon's at the top right of that elevation, you can see units three and four quite a bit, quite a ways down the slope, so they wouldn't be, really wouldn't be visible.
Those are the only questions I have right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Vice Chair, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple, I think you mentioned it, Evan. You know, when I look at this site plan, first of all, I actually really struggle with the way it was worded at first, with being two duplexes, so I'm not good at math, but I came up with four and then I counted the boxes on the plans and got it right, I think. But I'm looking at the driveway here and I guess my only concern, and you said it was submitted to OCFA, is that they, as far as fire access goes, it's a pretty deep lot for a truck to get back there. And maybe they, the plan is to, if they do have to fight a fire, they approach it from both sides.
Could be.
But I assume our conditions and the way these are set up, you don't grant permits until they have a fire master plan.
Exactly correct, yep. As part of the plan checks, part of the building permit issuance process, they'll have to submit evidence from OCFA that has been finally and firmly approved by that agency.
And then just, I roll out my cans or me and my wife fight over who's taking out the trash. We have a twenty-foot driveway, so the unit four and unit three, whoever moves into those, you know, that's going to be a pretty big haul for the trash to get out to the street with a fifteen-foot grade change. You're talking prenuptial right there, probably. Other than that, I don't really have any, those are more comments than questions, I guess. I do, you know, one note, though, to address your comments, the lot's eighty feet wide, so it's like, it's more than double, the other lots adjacent are thirty feet, twenty feet. And I think this, you know, given the zoning, you could get up to fourteen units of the acre under the zoning, it's certainly not at the top of the threshold, but that's all I bet.
Commissioner McCann?
No, I do. Vice Chairman Nelson, you referenced maybe a discussion about OCFA. Was there, I was curious about that, was there some discussion or questions regarding OCFA?
Yeah, I think Evan had mentioned it in the staff report, that plans were submitted to them. There's a conceptual approval, but they would have to get a fire master plan approval prior to starting the grading operation.
Okay, I missed that then, thank you. I have some questions, maybe I'll leave them for the second portion, more comments, but do we, is it the city's expectation that they record, create these two lots before they pull building permits?
The zoning would dictate that they finish the subdivision, that they record the map before we're able to issue building permits. Again, the, as a single lot, the zoning is residential duplex fourteen, which by definition means you get two units maximum for every lot. So if they didn't record the map and submit it to us, then the plan that you see before you, four units, it would be rejected because the zoning would only, again, allow two units on one lot. So if the map isn't recorded, they can't go forward with the project as proposed, they'd be limited to just two units on one lot.
Okay. So given that, it will be my discussion, or discussion to add a condition that the final map be recorded prior to building permit issuance. I was reading through the conditions and I found them somewhat confusing as far as their location. There were, there are seemingly major categories, category C, prior to building permit submittal and issuance, category D, prior to approval of final parcel map. In my experience, you have those major headers and then you have a bunch of conditions right behind it. It's kind of like a checklist, hey, if I do all these sub items, then I can get my building permit, but it seems like some other conditions are in different places. Chairwoman, would you suggest that I kind of discuss those now or in a second? Because I don't really have any more questions other than I do have issues for where those are located.
I would bring those up now so that we can kind of have staff explain what their position is on that.
Okay, okay. So can staff please explain to me why certain conditions that seem, for example, tied to building permit, like numbers thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and forty are under subcategory D, which has to do with a final map approval?
Well, generally, the headings for our conditions of approval are laid out in a more or less sequential order, although not exactly so and because certain parts of the plan check, submittal and review process occur concurrently with one another. For example, the grading permit and the building permit, submittal, happen at the same time. It's required that you submit both, both parts of your project and because we have to look at both sets of plans to make sure everything is, comports to everything else. But yet in the resolution, one's laid out before the other implying that one part of the process occurs before the other. So at the same time, we like to allow as much flexibility as possible for developers as they go through the process. And so if everything was rigidly, one through twenty, let's say, it wouldn't allow, again, for certain things to happen as the project unfolds. But that said, each of these headings, these are all the requirements that go along with each of those parts of the project. So a grading permit wouldn't be issued until all of the conditions under that heading have been completed. But that's not to say that you can't move on to letter D if or what have you, C or what have you, you know, prior to finishing C. Does that make sense? There, things are organized more or less in a sequential fashion. You couldn't obviously get your, you know, certificate of occupancy before you pull the building permit, so.
I think, Evan, a clearer way to answer the question is that all of the items listed under C, so twenty, conditions twenty through twenty-six, have to be done before you can get a building permit, but that doesn't mean that there are not other conditions that need to be satisfied before you can get a building permit. So I guess it's not an exclusive list, but these are items that need to be done before you can get a building permit. So same thing before the final map can be approved, conditions twenty-seven through forty have to be met, but it doesn't mean necessarily that there are not other conditions that would have to be met. So it's broken up that way.
Okay, thank you. In my opinion, I think that we would be doing a better service to the applicant and to staff if some of these were rearranged a little bit and I can enumerate them now. For example, okay, under D, prior to final map approval, you're saying in number thirty-five, "All monuments shall be set," or "Security provided." Typically, I guess the "security provided," yeah, that's fine. Monuments frequently go with occupancy. I don't know what number thirty-six, "The final geotechnical report," for example, has to do with the final map, that seems more of a building permit issue to me. Number thirty-seven, "Written approval provided certifying that the grading is done," again, I don't know how that ties to the map. Again, that seems to me a building permit issue. So I can either do it now or later, but I would suggest a little bit of rearranging to make it clear for the applicant because they're not going to know, hey, what's are these items, twenty-seven through forty-seven, do I have to do prior to my building permit if they're off kind of elsewhere in the conditions?
Well, is there a certain, does it, I guess, first of all, we should find out, does it matter what order they're in or it just, as they come up, as the inspector goes out there and looks and ticks off everything, then they move on to whatever the next item needs to be done, not necessarily in, you know, in order or how does that work from a practical standpoint?
Go ahead, John, why don't you describe, because as Evan was mentioning, a lot of this happens concurrently and in the city of Dana Point, you cannot get a building permit issued until your grading plans are approved, so all of those things happen first. I do agree that conditions thirty-six and thirty-seven might have been inadvertently put in this section, I'm not...
I think I may have questioned the Public Works Department on this too and they gave me an explanation, which I'm probably not as adept as they would be to explain that. I don't know, we do have our Public Works Director here and I don't know if, I hate to put you on the spot, Brad, but it does say that, let's say...
I would say that was a discussion you left me out of today. Just saying. When I asked, should I stay? And I was told, no. So, but let's do this, we can move anything up from D to C tonight if that would make you feel better, but what I would propose is that we sit down with Commissioner McCann as, we've used this sequence now for years, so it seems to have worked, but it won't make any difference to us getting those requirements met if we say we want them a little sooner. But it, there is, there are reasons why we have done them in the sequence that we have and, but I would be happy to, for this project, just move them up as you would like and then we can sit down and talk about the process because we, you know, this is a similar sequence that we use on all these and we can explain what our reasons for and maybe adjust them or leave them the way they are for the next one that comes before you, if that would be acceptable.
Would that be acceptable, Commissioner McCann?
Yeah, no, that's fine and I'm not trying to be a problem child. I'm just, I've looked at lots of conditions and the way I've seen them is, boom, here's my prior building permit and I start working on getting them off. And so then if I had some pop-up later that would throw me off, I definitely feel like we should add a condition.
The, if I could mention, the reason we do it is to try to not force them to do everything upfront before we issue certain documents. We actually think this is, is more helpful to the developer because he has to put in what is necessary for each step along the way, but he doesn't have to do things for a future requirement earlier than is necessary. That said, again, I would reiterate that perhaps we should, let's do whatever you would like to do tonight and then we can sit down at a, at a meeting at some time and look at the reasons why we're doing it and adjust those if necessary because you may be absolutely right, there's a good reason and you have some experience in the field and we should consider that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Claus, do you have any questions of staff?
Yeah, a couple. Is this going to coastal? Does it have to go to coastal?
No, the property's not in the coastal zone.
Okay. And it's being, this is being shown to us as a subdivision, okay? Can you give me a good explanation of what a subdivision is?
A subdivision would...
They took two things and they...
Beg your pardon?
Would that be the, would that be the answer? You got something that's much more elegant?
Yeah. To subdivide is simply to split one lot into one or into two or more lots.
So there, okay, so there will be no HOA on this?
No, they, again, they're not condominiums.
This is not very simple. Am I understanding that correctly, that those who be living there do not... who be living there do not own them?
Correct.
Okay. So the developer is the one who owns it, or whatever it is. Okay. There's something said here about a fee, a fee project. Would a fee project just be like a condo thing? Because I'm not, I'm not used to subdivisions. I'm used to like condos.
Are you referring to a condition of approval, or is it in the?
No, it was just interesting that, that one of the things that, that was shown in here was a fee, and it seemed, it seemed to have been, I don't think it had any explanation behind it. But it said something to the fact that it was not a fee property, that it's not the exact.
Fee property. Could I ask which page?
It's referenced to the impact fee areas.
Oh, to impact fees? Certainly, yeah. There are impact fees that go along with the project. Once they submit for their building permits, impact fees would be, would be levied in priority issuing those building permits, of course. That's, that's what it's referring to.
My question would be, now, if one owner owns the two lots, I mean, can they, in the future, sell one of the lots? And, and then the two buildings, they, they can rent them out, or they can live there? Okay. And is there, are they sharing the driveway, or, or unit one and two has their own driveway?
Correct.
Access?
Yeah, the lots were subdivided intentionally to make sure that each lot has its own dedicated access to Villa Canone. You don't have to travel through one lot to get to the other lot.
And is there, could, sometime in the future, they subdivide, you know, the parcel two, let's say, and can they do that? And then sell?
Probably not. I know certainly parcel one wouldn't meet the minimum dimension or area requirements to be subdivided yet again. Parcel two, at almost eighteen thousand square feet, you probably could split it again. But then your other standards, other than just the raw area, the raw size of the land, you'd have to be able to provide dedicated access to that lot. You'd have to meet all the usual setback requirements to fit a duplex or a single-family dwelling onto the lot. So a subdivision isn't just about splitting the land up. You have to make sure that the future lot can be developed according with, to the zoning code. And if there isn't enough space, and that resulting subdivision to meet all requirements, access, setbacks, et cetera, then the subdivision wouldn't be approved.
I think the simple answer is that this is developed to its maximum extent, really. Again, though, these individual units could be, there could be a further subdivision only in the case that it was made in the condominiums.
Okay. Can they go farther down slope and, or the lot ends at the hundred and two feet? Is that it? They can't?
The width of the lot. But unit four is as close to its property line as it can get. There's a minimum fifteen-foot setback from the rear property line, and unit four is, is right there, essentially. So, so no, they can't go any, you wouldn't have room to put another building, or to move unit four at least, any closer to the rear property line.
Okay. All right, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there, are there any speaker slips?
No.
No? Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commissioners for discussion. Who'd like to start?
I would.
All right. Commissioner McCann?
I would just propose to move around a few of these conditions to, to be under the, the, what I consider to be the appropriate subheading category. So I would propose to move, or, or suggest that we move conditions thirty-three, thirty-six, and thirty-seven, and forty into, move them to follow condition twenty-six, so that they would be under heading C, prior to building permit. And I would propose that we can strike condition thirty-nine. Thirty-nine is essentially repeated in forty-five, prior to occupancy, and I think that's the appropriate place for it.
Can, can you repeat that for me?
Sure, I, I propose.
Strike thirty-nine?
Strike thirty-nine, because it's forty-five is a duplicate of it, and, and that's where I consider it should be, is prior to occupancy. And I would propose to move thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and forty into subcategory C, or immediately following what's currently condition twenty-six, and then just renumbering the whole thing. So thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and forty into subcategory C, and then, which would be immediately following number twenty-six, and then renumbering, I'm, I'm sure that, you know, renumber it before you provide it to the applicant.
Right. And then you said, strike thirty-nine, and then you said something after that?
Only strike thirty-nine, because in my opinion, it's, it's duplicative of number forty-five.
Oh, you weren't moving any others after that? I thought I heard you say, so I must have missed it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that possible? I mean, or does that create any?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Claus?
I like Villa Canone, and so I'm kind of pretty delighted that something nice is being done here. It's a pre, it's a big lot of land. I think what the applicant has done with it is very impressive in that he's really made it kind of, it's all, it's a small little harbor for itself in an interesting way. It's, it's, it's some lots, I think, that needed to be developed that will make Villa Canone even better, and more beautiful than it currently is. I, I am a little concerned about taking the stuff that the city has been using for lots and lots of years, and now we're moving it here and here and here and here. But I'm going to let that work itself out. It could become a cesspool. But it'll be your cesspool. I mean, I'm prepared to, to approve this. I think it's a good project. I like it.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any further comments on?
No, just, for the record, I'm trying to make it more clear for the applicant and staff in the future. And other than that, I'm, I'm supportive of the project. I think it's a good creative design on a challenging parcel.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair?
Yes. So I am in favor of this. I was remembering a discussion earlier today about kids staying home too long with their families. And this looks like a perfect, you know, you move them to the second house, and then at some point, they're gone. But I like the project. I, I'm not opposed to the changes that Commissioner McCann is suggesting. I could see how these can get pretty confusing really quickly to an applicant, and I'm not going to get into the weeds on it tonight, so I'll just let, let it go where it's at, and support moving those conditions around. As long as Public Works is okay with it, I'm good with it.
All right. Commissioner Murphy?
I'm unsure. You know, one of the things we look at, is the proposal, proposal compatible with an enhancement to the surrounding neighborhood and city? And I, I just have a vision that this is going to be a kind of trailing down this slope of structure, of, of housing, where we don't have that up there in that area. And I don't know if it fits with the whole ambiance of this. I can see, the proposal is, is, is well-written. I can see, from what everybody's saying, it's, it's, it's factually probably correct. But I don't want, you know, we have to be careful that our bluffs don't, don't start to look like Hollywood, where, you know, all these houses are just climbing down the hills. I don't know if that's, it's not a very good analogy. It, it looks like it's well-prepared. I, I just personally don't like the idea of that many structures in that, in that location. But I also support it.
Okay. You know, Commissioner Murphy brought up some interesting, you know, ideas about, you know, having something trail down the hill. But I think that it's physically suitable for the, the lot, and it is zoned RD fourteen, which is residential, you know, fourteen. So technically, it could be higher density, and it's not. So it's really kind of low-density. I think, you know, it is a challenging lot, and it seems like the applicant has really put some thought into taking this challenge and being able to build something on it that is an attractive project. So I, I'm in favor of it. I think it'll, it'll be nice to have it filled in there. And also, my other comment is, I, I don't have any problems with Commissioner McCann's switching things around if, you know, staff and public works is fine with it. But otherwise, I think it's a good project, and we just need a motion on the table here, so.
Make one more comment before we go that. And really to address Commissioner Murphy's comments, I think you, you reference bluff, bluffs, you know, I don't see this as a bluff top. And if you go over there and look at how Villa California developed, you've got driveways that front on both streets, and they do, they followed the topography of that hillside. My neighborhood, we have the same thing going on. And I think utilizing the land that, you know, that we have and building it out to the, at least existing density seems appropriate, especially in this spot. This was a hilltop bluff, you know, next to the ocean. I would have a little bit of an issue trying to build down that hillside. But given that you're at a, an intersection of PCH and the I-5, it seems like an appropriate place for a little bit more density and more housing versus leaving it just hillside. So that's just my comment. I can appreciate where you're at then with it. It, it seems different than everybody else.
Yes.
But we have a lot that, you know, the lot itself is different than everybody else as well. So to that extent, I think it fits well, and let somebody make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner McCann?
If I could make a motion?
Sure.
I move approval of tentative parcel map TPM fourteen dash zero 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 one and site development permit SDP fourteen dash zero zero one zero for the subdivision of one vacant lot into two lots in conjunction with the construction of two detached residential duplexes on each of the new lots at two six three seven one Villa Canone, with the recommendation of removing a few of the conditions around as I previously suggested. Do I need to read those in? No?
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Commissioner McCann made the motion with some changes. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Vice Chair. Please register your votes. And there we go. Passes. Motion passes five to zero. All right. We're moving right along here. We have item four, general plan consistency analysis, GPC fifteen dash zero 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 one, and coastal development permit CDP fifteen dash zero zero one seven for the vacation of portions of Del Prado and Ruby Lantern Street in the vicinity of APN numbers six eight two dash two three three dash zero two, six eight two dash two three three dash zero three, and last but not least, six eight two dash two three one dash zero one. Do we have a report on item four?
Yes. Erica Demquitz will give the report. Thank you, Ursula. Good evening, members of the planning commission. The portions that are proposed to be vacated on Del Prado and Ruby Lantern are located in the vicinity of three four one oh five PCH, and also two other properties, two four two nine two Del Prado, which was the Montessori School, and the adjacent play yard next door to that. The general area of this is located on the northern end of Town Center. This is Blue Lantern on the far left-hand side of your screen, PCH on this side, and Del Prado. So right at the entry to the couplet area. The subject areas are also in the city's coastal overlay zone, and the project requires a coastal development permit. Prior to this evening's meeting, the city council approved a notice of intent to vacate these same areas or portions of Del Prado and Ruby Lantern earlier this year in January as part of the Del Prado PCH Phase One project. And prior to that, in two thousand thirteen, and one year before that, two thousand twelve, excuse me, the city council also approved of amendments to the project, as well as the original approval, which took place a little earlier than that. And they also made findings of general plan consistency for the project. The vacations were part of that overarching project, which is the Del Prado Phase One Street Improvement Plan. The purpose of tonight's meeting is for the planning commission to report on the conformity of the vacation with the city's general plan. This is the portion, little more in-depth view of Del Prado to be vacated. It was originally dedicated for public highway use. Actually, all of Del Prado, I should add, in nineteen twenty-four. And this shows the three properties generally just in front of each of them, if you will, at PCH and Del Prado. These are a couple of photos that show the area, portions of Del Prado to be vacated. They've been enhanced with landscaping, sidewalks, street trees, lighting. This is another view, looking north along Del Prado PCH, at Blue Lantern, and then also to the south. This is the section of Ruby Lantern that's proposed to be vacated. It was dedicated, like Del Prado, in nineteen twenty-five, very early on, for public highway use. This is a photograph of Ruby Lantern and the area to be vacated. This is Ruby Lantern divided through here and Del Prado. So with the recent completion and realignment of Del Prado and PCH, essentially, these portions of the public street and right-of-way system are no longer needed for public use, and therefore can be returned to private property owners. Pursuant to state law, a general plan consistency determination must be made by the planning commission prior to the vacation of these rights-of-way. Excuse me. Vacations, the vacation action will not impact access to any of the budding properties or coastal resources, and are therefore consistent with the city's general plan and local coastal program. So as a result, as I mentioned, staff is supporting approval of the general plan consistency and coastal development permit to allow the city to proceed with the vacation in these areas. And that concludes my presentation.
And if I could just add to that, the Town Center Plan, or Lantern District Plan, was adopted in two thousand six by the city council, and then certified by the Coastal Commission in two thousand eight. And it is the land use document that we look to for guidance for this area. And it contemplated the road realignment in order to create some of the urban form that it's looking for as part of the vision. And part of that doesn't allow driveways off of PCH and Del Prado in order to get the continuous storefronts that really create that walkable pedestrian environment. And in this case, because of the alley system that we have, you can access parcels from, from the alleys, in, in most cases, and certainly in the cases. and certainly in the cases here. And when that document was adopted, the city also did a general plan amendment to ensure that it was consistent with the general plan, which allows us to make this general plan consistency finding as well. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
All right. Do the commissioners have any questions of staff?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Murphy?
Just out of curiosity, with the vacation, to whom does this, these pieces of property revert to?
To the adjacent property owners.
Also, there are still property owners available to accept them back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
To explain further, for, one of them's in front of the Montessori School. So that property owner will get greater property in front of the Montessori School. And they're planning on redeveloping that property. So they will likely use that additional property as part of that development effort.
Good. Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you. I think a couple of questions here. So I know it's on the plans, and I went and looked at it this weekend. It's landscaped now, but I assume that whoever gets the property back and whatever piece, they can essentially develop out their property under the current zoning and the general plan. But are there reservations for any utilities that may be built in there? And are there no access easements? Or is this the general plan guides the curb cut access here? Because you're basically giving back right-of-way up to the back of the sidewalk?
We're giving property up to the back of the sidewalk. But there, we will retain an easement on the very front tip of the property for where there are existing utilities and as a slight bit of a view corridor right up to the top there. I don't know if you have anything further than that, Erica?
Just the two exhibits.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Okay.
I guess, you know, my concern would be that somebody feels like they've got a driveway now because they connect out to the street. They can do a curb cut and they've got access and...
Well, there used to be driveways to both properties. The old Belle Bazaar property and the Montessori School property. Those were removed when we did the construction project. And those will remain removed, so to speak, because the Town Center Lantern District Plan precludes putting driveways in for the reasons that Ursula mentioned.
So it's the general plan manages that process as far as someone comes in, tries to get a curb cut?
Correct.
They don't get it because it doesn't, you can't? Okay. And then the other, I assume that the owners would love to have this back and they've got plans and so we don't have fallow land there that ends up, you know, we've got landscape and that's not maintained anymore because it's kind of been a...
You may, this has been in the process for a long time and we've been working with the property owners jointly on this process for a long time. You may realize that the old Belle Bazaar property is now being redone to have a restaurant in there. And we've coordinated very closely with the property owner on them using the property in a fashion realizing this is coming with their development effort there.
Yeah, my concern would be that you, you guys have done such a great job with that hole down, the Lantern District. And then I wouldn't want to see plants dying as a result of a disconnect there. And it sounds like you guys have.
I can, I can tell you both developers are planning on it at this point.
And then the last question. So this is, if I understand the staff report, the city never paid for this. So this is in a situation where they're giving property away. This was a quick, you know, something for something. The developers came in at one point and as part of a subdivision of that area, they dedicated land. The land's no longer needed and the city's giving back what they don't need anymore.
That's correct.
That's all I've got.
Okay. And then kind of piggybacking on what the Vice Chair was talking about, condition seven kind of ensures that the landscaping will be maintained. And so I'm assuming the city will...
Enforce that?
Yeah. Knock on their doors and say, hey, you know? Is that what will happen?
Correct.
Okay. And then, now, what if they don't want to put landscaping there and they want to extend their patio for dining or something? Will they be able to do that? Or does it have to be landscaping?
That's a good question. The, the plan that is prepared allows a certain portion of that area to be buildable. So, which includes the ten-foot setback that's in existence today and seven-foot extension of the property line. So the, the properties and will be able to extend their buildable area for structures seventeen feet from what they are today out in front. Where we will retain the utility easement, the proposal that has been discussed and would be taken in front of the City Council would be to allow them use of that property if they so desire to come in commensurate with the fact that it's a utility easement. So if they wanted to, for example, put tables and chairs and an umbrella out there, they wouldn't be allowed to do that. But they would not be allowed to put permanent structures over the utility easement area.
Okay. And so these conditions aren't going to preclude them from doing patios or anything like that?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and then for the irrigation, does that switch over to the property owner then?
Yes, it does. It's their property. It's not unlike your easement and your parkway out in front of your home. If you happen to have a parkway out there, you still get to maintain the landscaping, even though it's still a city easement.
Okay. And as far as property taxes and all of that, I mean, do they get reassessed for extra footage being gifted or vacated?
My understanding is, yes, they will get some of the burden with some of the benefit with that regard.
Any questions? Commissioner McCann of staff?
So will there be any, might there be any site distance issues relative to this space from a traffic perspective?
We've looked at that, but you still retain a very wide sidewalk area. So for example, if you're heading down coast and heading into the Lantern District area from up coast, as you are approaching and turning onto Del Prado from PCH, you have a very wide section of sidewalk there that you'll be able to see as you're making the right turn. And you have no real obstruction or people coming at you. It's not a, the intersection requires that the oncoming traffic, you know, wait for the signal and go out on the PCH and make a turn as a regular intersection. If you are approaching, if you're going up coast on Del Prado, again, you will have, you'll be out beyond the sidewalk to a point where you'll be able to see up coast. But you are controlled by the traffic signal there. So you won't be trying to make a turn and looking around and see if traffic is coming because it'll be a red light for them when it's a green light for a left turn for you from Del Prado on to PCH. Does that, does that answer your question?
So there's no height restrictions then that are going to be overlaid onto this vacation? Just whatever the zoning and the setbacks allow, it's now subject to all that?
No. And I say that because there will be a height restriction, I expect, in the final vacation that goes to the City Council for the utility easement area. Because there was a desire from the design standpoint that as you are heading down coast on PCH towards the Lantern District, that it would be nice for you to be able to see Del Prado in the Lantern District area there. So for the tip of the east, the tip of the vacation area there, there will likely be a height restriction that the city attorney's office is working on with the applicant in the neighborhood of, say, five feet, four feet, something in there for anything. So you wouldn't put a large monument sign up there, as an example. On the other hand, I think if you had an umbrella that was up and then down or, you know, that sort of thing, it wouldn't kind of restrict that. It's more of an aesthetic kind of a consideration, not a sight view from a traffic standpoint consideration. If that makes sense.
Yes. And on the Ruby Lantern vacation, there's kind of a funny jog in it. Is that, why is that? Is that, why doesn't it go, why doesn't it extend all the way to the north to the intersection of, you know, an extension of that other right-of-way line? Why does, why is there a little knock out there?
I live there. The neighbors like it.
I, you know, I'm guessing we have some utilities there of some sort that, right on that corner there, either underground or otherwise, that was the reason for that little knock out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Claus, do you have questions?
Yeah, I'm, I love this little, little block here and walk down there frequently. And it's very nice to see it kind of growing up. And, and at the same time, I have always loved the palm trees and everything that we've done there on Del Prado. And what this seems to do is, is really kind of bring it together rather than pull it apart. I don't see anybody really even going to be able, the neighborhood being able to notice that, that pretty much something massive has, has happened. It really remain, it remains what it is and it's been, being cleaned up and dressed up a little better. When I, when it first came through on the vacation, I thought, oh dear. So I went out and spent a lot of time there. You've done it right and well, as usually.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing if we have, and we do, if we have speaker slides. Thank you. Keith Johannes?
Good evening, Chairwoman O'Connor, Commissioners. My name is Keith Johannes. I am a Dana Point resident for a long time. I have concerns about this because once property is vacated, it's pretty difficult to reverse that, if not impossible, reverse that process. This was not stolen from them. This is city property. This is an iconic entrance to Dana Point. While I first opposed the archway that is on the covering to Del Prado, since it was approved and I worked with the city and staff volunteering some of the resources that I had to be able to get some artwork on that. So I think this is a place in the city that really has some potential and I don't think it's already, that potential has not been developed. So I am familiar with the project in the area. I've been there a lot and taken a lot of different views of it. So I'm here tonight to request that you not move this forward. There's really not any compelling argument to vacate this land. There's, property owners will, of course, benefit from it. But the city could also benefit from it. And I think we need to take a look at that. I think part of it, if, if the city is already engaging in discussions with the property owners, assuming that they already have that and how they're going to change their development forward, I think we need to know more about what is going on in this process. So I think we need to know all of the reasons why we should vacate it. And I think we should know all of the reasons why we should not vacate it. And I think this needs a greater, a greater amount of discussion, not only amongst you, but also amongst the community to have input for you to decide on some of these before it gets moved forward to the City Council. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johannes. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for comment. Anybody would like to start?
I'll start.
All right. Vice Chair?
Might as well. Thank you, Chairwoman O'Connor. So a couple of questions for the city attorney, just so I'm really clear. What, what are we approving tonight? Because the way I read is we are approving, we are essentially making the statement that this vacation's consistent with the general plan, but we're not approving any vacation in itself. That's something that we can't do as a commission, right? The council makes that call and is that...
Yep, that's correct, tonight. The only thing within your purview is whether or not the proposed vacation is consistent with the general plan. The council is going to wrestle with issues of whether or not the vacation is a good idea. They're going to go through a very elaborate public hearing process for that. But that's not something that falls within the Planning Commission's purview, so.
Thank you. That, that's what I thought, okay.
By, by voting, or not by voting, by, by saying that this is consistent with the general plan, you're not making a statement on whether or not you support the vacation. You're just...
And we're not approving any kind of a permit for development here or how they can use their property, whatever ends up happening, whether it's vacated or not, if there's changes and it kicks up a site development permit or something. Nothing in what we're doing tonight, whether, if we approve it, would authorize the use of that property in any way other than the way it is today, right?
That's correct. The CDP will have no effect if the council does not approve the vacation.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That was, that was it.
Okay. Anyone want to comment on their feelings about approving or disapproving? Commissioner McCann?
I promise to not be long-winded here. Is it a, I, my opinion is that this is, you know, we're asked to find on general plan consistency and that it is. It's, it's very consistent with the Lantern District Plan as approved. Personally, if anyone cares, I don't like it. I, you know, the process, if we ever decided to get that back, the process would be so onerous and expensive that it would, it would probably be impossible. So I, I don't think it's a good idea to vacate it. But I do find that it's consistent with the general, yeah, the general plan. That being said, I am concerned about height within that area. And really, that, we want people to be back and down the Del Prado corridor. And if, to the extent that you can see down there and see the arch and everything and the landscaping, that makes it much more inviting. And is it appropriate for us to stipulate a height restriction on the vacation or no?
At this stage, you really can't put any conditions of approval on the general plan consistency finding. That's something that certainly council could consider in connection with the street vacation. And we will certainly ensure that the minutes reflect your statements, so, which get approved by the City Council, so they will see those.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my comments.
Commissioner Claus?
It is consistent with our plan.
Okay. Vice Chair?
I do have one more question. Would it be, it would be within our purview to add a condition to that the city studies the height, though, and ensures that it's consistent with what the goals and the policies of that plan were? I mean, we're not, we're just, it's a recommendation, right?
You know, again, we can't really do any conditions on the consistency finding.
Okay.
It's not the type of, it's not an approval, it's a finding.
Gotcha.
You can certainly direct or advise staff to study height.
Yeah, and I, just to address, I'm trying to address Commissioner McCann's comments relative to making sure that whatever happens here is done in a thoughtful manner. And, you know, again, I'm assuming that's what's going to happen because everything today's been thoughtful. But I don't want to let that one slide by, so.
We can certainly, in the staff report for when the vacation goes to the City Council and as we summarize the Planning Commission's finding for the general plan consistency, mention in that staff report that there was this concern.
Commissioner Murphy?
Well, just so I'm clear, we have a very narrow issue, correct? I mean, the, the issue is the consistency with the general plan. That's the narrow issue right now. Of course, we all have sort of side issues about with the vacation, what will be used on that property.
on that property, and can the city control, continue any control over the now vacated property?
I think Brad spoke to that, so certainly what will continue to control the vacated property will be, first, the underlining zoning, general plan zoning, the Lantern District Plan, the easement for the utilities, and that will be an agreement between the city and the property owners, and things can be specified like a height restriction, et cetera. So there will be some additional controls.
Thank you.
My comments are that I think we all feel pretty much the same way, even the Speaker, Mr. Johannes. You know, we, that, that one portion that's being vacated is such a crucial element that, to, to the town center plan, and I'm sure the City Council will feel the same way, that, you know, we want that to look its ultimate best, because that's one of the first things we see, well, we see the arch and then, you know, that, that little slip of land. And I, I really wouldn't want to see, you know, someone build out as far as they can, and then there's, there'll just be this little, you know, swath of grass. I mean, it would be nice if, if there were, and I know they can't go too far because of the utilities, but it would be really nice to, you know, have some umbrellas or some nice dining out there, or, or something that is pedestrian-friendly, or definitely, you know, the landscaping has to be kept up, and, and so whatever we can do to enforce that, that, you know, parcel maintains its ultimate best, and on how it looks and, and its use, I think that's really important. And if, there is a finding, I mean, that if it's within, the vacation fits within the general plan, there's no doubt about that, but, you know, we all want to make sure that that really stays, is true to the intent, our intentions for that town center plan. So I'd be in favor of it with the recommendation the City Council just to, to take care of that property for us, so. Anyway, do we have a motion? Are we making a recommendation or a motion for, for this finding?
Well, you'll need to make a motion to make a finding of general plan consistency, and then also to approve the associated coastal development permit.
Okay.
Make that motion.
All right. No, yeah, probably, might as well, motions.
So I make a motion that we approve the general, make a recommendation to approve general plan consistency analysis, GPC fifteen dash zero zero one, and coastal development permit, CDP fifteen dash zero zero one seven, for the vacation of portions of Del Prado and Ruby Lantern Street, in the vicinity of APN six eight two dash two three three dash zero one, and six eight two two three three dash zero two, six eight two two three three dash zero three, and six eight two dash two three one dash zero.
All right, with the recommendation.
Absolutely, with the recommendation that the council looks at making sure that this is done properly and within the guidelines of the existing general plan, the Lantern District Plan.
Sounds good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. If the thing will cooperate. Okay, that motion passes, five to zero. Thank you very much. We are moving on to old business, there is no old business, new business, there is no new business, but then we have a staff report, and I was wondering if we could maybe take a break.
I was just going to ask you the same question.
All right, so we'll come back at five after eight. It is now four to eight, so we'll take a short break.
Since we have a break. I've been feeling badly for you because I just made it hard for you to be sitting here at six o'clock on the dawn.
I'm sorry, say that again. My work?
Yeah.
Oh, well, this is the one, this is the one time I was, the last time I drove in from Las Vegas.
But then, to, to, you've actually been.
To the dinner, the first time I didn't know about that.
Oh, but you made it to.
But I was sitting here when you was all up still.
Tell you my story. When I first got on the planning, I was.
How are you? And I was on the plan. What gives us the lunch break to have you come here?
Mostly, I stayed mostly in the United States, and so on.
Is that the San Diego thing?
Yep, San Diego. They just started today. I actually.
I hope it's planned sometime.
Dying to hear how it's going. That's where I just came from. Oh, were you there? How's it going? Yeah.
Time's one, three minutes, six minutes.
Almost finished.
And according to our contract.
But they got started. They got started.
And so what I do.
Show up with all yours.
I picked up the phone, I called the people.
Opening statements and then watch.
This is my business. I want to make a deal with you. I feel what it costs.
For the point of for.
So I cannot work, travel every other Monday. And they agreed.
That's a good figure.
And I just thought, you know, maybe.
You were there.
That's what the issue that he's dealing with, is that there's just too much going on. Actually work for people.
Okay.
My fault, it's my fault.
But I won't have to wait until Friday.
Art for Christie's, the art auction.
I don't, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
I ran there, high in real estate division for Western US, Western, Canada, Western.
Just trying to establish that. Whether it's a sweet, having a good place.
That gorgeous property.
He was asking about, what was.
Is he in the chair?
A sweet letter. No, but I was, it was, it really, really honed my spirit, and not having to worry so much about just, I have to be there. Yes, yeah, sorry, I said, we. I could do, I could visit, I could do, just get in. For having all the plans didn't come. I just thought I saw you struggling.
Yeah, it's not big number.
So, yeah, so you always get somebody screaming at you.
Different planning commission at a different city.
Wait a minute.
Oh. Some of the dinners, because the first one I didn't know about. I had checked my email that day, because, see, I said that, they recommended when I, I said, I might want to set up a separate email, in case, in case we ever get sued, we have to look at, like, email back, but they could look at all of your emails, something separate account just for city business, and that's all they would get to look at. So, okay, find it.
So you can write a resume by this.
The last time.
Aprils and.
Vegas, and they came back, and it was just all, all of them.
They would have to change that, that wall.
It shouldn't.
And if you go to what you're doing, people like, out of what I learned, say, okay, fine, got you some slack here.
Who's giving us the authority?
I'm in real estate, and over the course of years, I've worked with one company, and owned another company, and did this and did that, and all of a sudden, one day, somebody picked up a phone, somebody, Christie's is, they'd like you to.
They request time.
Come down to Santa Fe, Mexico, which is. Located.
Okay, well, so far, so good.
Went down there, and they, they were actually, there were only three of us at this entire country. And then, I also had, I went to London, because that was, they're actually, Christie's originally Santa Fe, Mexico, places, because she said I don't move, so they went to Mexico, and they said, like what you're doing, live wherever you want, you know, they were really good in terms of, and I learned at home my negotiation. Yeah, amazing. And, yeah, I saw some gorgeous women. And so I did a Saudi American, Saudi Arabian friend, who happened to be a good friend to her, which is, may or may not have had anything to do with my life. Sold his house in Colorado. He had nine hundred thousand acres.
Oh my gosh. Wow, that's amazing.
He was a very interesting guy, because he was definitely a Saudi, there were, you know, I, I, I watched my step, but he was also very American. So it was, I enjoyed. Esprah was the most interesting. Oh, Sophia, I guess.
Yeah, I guess she's pretty distinctive.
I, I didn't, wouldn't show up in her doorstep, often, I was in these stuff. As the poet of Christie's, they are, they are so dedicated. They're, they're just, and they have, they have people, huge paintings that are placed in the. And they have, they have everything. The one thing I kind of didn't like was, if you're carrying over three million, a security guy travels, so obviously the cost of your life is less. Okay. Make sure I get that extra painting in there.
For sure.
Are we ready? All right, we're back on the record with our staff reports and our height workshop.
Yes, and John has the honors of presenting this captivating subject here in Dana Point.
As you recall, Commissioner McCann, and I'm sure others, were interested in having a workshop on how the city measures building height, and as I was putting this presentation together, I was realizing, oh my God, we have so many different height standards, it's, it is somewhat complex. So you'll have to bear with me if it, I hope it's not too dry, but we can open it to questions anytime, it's very informal. But I titled this, How High Is A Building? And because essentially, it is all relative. I'm showing this photograph of this existing home in the city, and this was originally approved under the county, and I looked up the, the approval of this building, and it noted that the building was twenty-five feet high. Yet, if you apply the current standards for this neighborhood, the city would measure it at forty-five feet high. So again, it's just all in how you measure it. This is obviously a legal non-conforming structure under the current standards. I, there's a building that I was quite fond of, it's in Scandinavia, and I remember this building, and it's, it's really just a twelve-story, a twelve-foot-high building, as you measure it, as you walk along the grade up this hill, the building's never taller than twelve feet. But if you measured it with the, one of the city's standards, you'd measure it from the ground at the bottom of the building, and then you'd go all the way up the hill to the highest point of the building, in which case, this building, which is kind of like a train that just runs all the way up the hill, it's up a hundred feet tall. So again, you can see, it's just relative to how you might measure a building. As I say here, here's a building in our town center, you'll recognize this, the existing Meridian Building, it's a mixed-use building in town center. It was approved actually under the county standard at thirty-five feet high. At the time, they measured this building, and even under the current standards, we would measure it from the sidewalk up to the top of the building, and it's thirty-five feet. But if you go to the back, where the alley is, and you've got a subterranean and parking structure, the building is forty-five feet plus tall from the back. So again, it's all relative to how you measure this building. Here's another example.
You do not measure like a facade that's on top, or you don't measure any of the fire chimneys.
Well, and I'll, I'll explain that a little bit later, but there are allowances for items such as elevators, or chimneys, or skylights, to go above the height limit to a certain extent. So generally, when you're measuring the building height, you're going to the top of the roof. Here's another example in our city, you recognize this building, the St. Regis? The standard, if you measure it from the front of the building, it's only thirty feet high. But you go around to the back where it's facing the ocean, it's actually seventy-eight feet high from there. So I'll explain this a little bit as we go, as we get into this a little bit later. So the point is that it can be perplexing for decision-makers like yourselves, it's even perplexing for some planners and developers, so until you, you have to really get into a lot of the details. Part of the reason is that Dana Point has six separate regulations for measuring building height, depending on where you are in the city. We have the Dana Point Zoning Code, which covers the majority of the city, and that has one method of measurement. We also have some other planning areas, such as the Dana Point Specific Plan, which was adopted under the county, and the city inherited it. Now, we've pretty much gotten rid of a large part of the specific plan and created new zoning for that area, but there's still some remaining areas where the Dana Point Specific Plan still applies, such as one of the items, the House on Camino Capistrano, that's regulated under the Dana Point Specific Plan. We also have the Monarch Beach Specific Plan, which covers the St. Regis and all the surrounding homes and other structures around that area. The Headlands Development Conservation Plan, that is another planning area, which has its own land use standards, development standards. Of course, the Dana Point Town Center Plan, which was adopted in two thousand and eight, that has its own unique standard for measuring building height. And lastly, the most recent separate plan that was approved is the Dana Point Harbor Revitalization Plan, which also has very unique standards for measuring building height. All of these are, they're a little bit similar, but they're all also a little bit different, and I'll go into the, some of the details of that. Any questions at this point? So again, the Dana Point has six separate sets of regulations. Those areas are, this is the Dana Point Zoning Code, this area that's this sort of dirty pink color, that's the Dana Point Zoning Code covers all that area. Then we have the Dana Point Specific Plan, the green area that's just come up, that's the remaining portions of the Dana Point Specific Plan, which used to be much, covered a much larger area, but we slowly, I suspect eventually we will probably get rid of that zoning. But that area in green right now is still covered by the Dana Point Specific Plan, which refers to the Orange County Zoning Code's method of measuring building height. I'll go into more detail with that. Next, we have the Monarch Beach. Next, we have the Monarch Beach Specific Plan, as I mentioned. That area has its own method of measuring building height. Again, that's the, the tennis villas, the homes around the golf courses, the, the golf course area, some homes on the ocean side of the highway, which is, I think, referred to as Ritz Point. And then, of course, the, the St. Regis. Next, we have the Headlands Plan. Again, there are, for the most part, there's regulations for the homes. There's also a commercial site, which has a unique height standard. And there's also a hotel site that's over by, overlooking the harbor, that has unique height standards for that building. Then, we've got the Town Center Plan, the orange area that's just popped up again. These are the six different areas. And then, lastly, there is the harbor with its height standards. So, I'll go individually with each, into each one of these planning areas to describe. So, I'll go first with the Dana Point Zoning Code. It's, it's relatively simple. It just means that, I mean, these are diagrams that are taken directly from Section 9.05, which are the general development standards for building height. Apologize for if it's a little bit blurry here. These are taken directly from the zoning code standards. This, this shows that if you grade your site, and you create a pad that's lower than the existing grade, then you have to measure the building from that lower pad level. Now, if you don't grade the site, and you just build on top of existing grade, then you measure from the lower of existing grade. Whereas here, the existing grade, you can't measure it existing grade because you've lowered it. So, you have to go from the lower of existing grade or proposed grade. In the case where you can build a basement, if you have a true basement, then you can, you measure from the ceiling of the basement to the top of the building. Really, all four sides have to be completely subterranean. Now, you're allowed a certain number of light wells to get light down in there, but they're very limited. And then, there is one other ability here in cases where you want to improve the drainage on your site. You're allowed to, to credit thirty, you can fill as much as you want, subject to a site development permit. But you get a credit of thirty inches for free to measure your building height from, in order to improve drainage for a site. Let's say, like on a coastal lot, where you want the drainage to not go over the bluff, you want it to run back to the street. So, it gives you a credit of thirty inches of fill, and you can measure building height from there. So, that's, that's generally for relatively flat or lots that aren't greatly sloped. Probably in about two thousand four, two thousand five, the city, prior to that, was granting variances pretty willy-nilly for homes on very steep sites. Because the height standards are so restrictive that people were asking for variances. And they were, the city was granting variances, as many as seven variances a year for buildings on steep slopes. So, the council directed staff to work with the committee to come up with a new standard for buildings on slope lots, so that we didn't have to approve so many variances. So, that created an additional section of the zoning code for lots that are twenty percent slope or greater. This would allow actually three-story buildings, and you get an extra five feet of height, subject to certain criteria. There's limitations on the floor area ratio, there's limitations on how high you could be above a street curb on the upper level, or the rear property line on the upper level. You have to have a certain number of step backs, so it's not a vertical box. But you got to have additional five feet of height. And depending on your roof pitch, well, I'll get into that later. You get anywhere from twenty-nine to thirty-three feet. As opposed to, let's see here, go back, the normal height limit is twenty-four to twenty-eight.
John, you determine your slope based on bottom of slope, top of slope, and then just, so if it's...
Essentially, if it's, if it averages twenty percent or greater from the front property line to the rear, or from side to side, either way. If you have twenty percent, then you get to have five feet more. And you could go two stories, or you could go three stories. But you have to have other, there's other criteria that sort of control that development. Interestingly enough, since that code was provided, there have been no variances since I've been, since in the last, since two thousand five for building height that I'm aware of in residential zones, so.
Does the garage, if it's like a garage-exclusive level, does that count as a story?
Yes, yeah, unless, yeah, it does because it's exposed. It doesn't, it counts just as a story.
Would you say, given that there's been no variances, would you say that that adoption has been successful?
Yes, definitely, definitely.
When did you start with the city?
Two thousand four. That was kind of my first task when I got here, was to try to figure that out. Because there was a very, very contentious variance that was granted. I won't mention the name, but it was, it ended up into multiple court dates, and on and on. And the city was just tired of, the council did not want to have to deal with variances anymore.
And for the record, the city did win that case.
That's true, that's true.
Nobody wins.
So, again, this is in the Dana Point Zoning Code, which covers most of the city, as I showed on that map.
John? Can I, are you going to discuss roof decks relative to max height, or?
Yes. Well, I could, actually, I could do that right now, let's see if I'm trying to go backwards here. What we found is some of these PowerPoints, it gets, they slow down depending on their size. So, this was a three-story allowance with additional height. Then, that's for residence, residential properties. Then, for non-residential, all commercial, there's separate standards. They're slightly higher, you go up to thirty-five feet, depending on your roof pitch. But again, it's very similar in the sense that it's, you have to measure from the lower of either existing grade or proposed grade. When you cut down, then you have to measure from there. Again, also, if you have a true basement, you can measure from the ceiling of the basement. And then, in cases where you have subterranean parking, you don't have to count that subterranean parking as part of the height, even though you have a driveway exposure here. But then, there's a limitation on the height of the exposures can be no more than four feet above the surrounding grade. So, again, that's commercial structures. Talk about roof pitch. I know there, Scott, you had some particular questions about roof pitch and how we measure that. Here's a building that has two different types of roofs. Basically, your roof, depending on the steepness of your pitch, you have a varied height limit. So, if your roof pitch is six and twelve or greater, which this is, this right here is probably eight and twelve, or ten and twelve, you get twenty-eight feet. If your roof pitch is between three and twelve and six and twelve, you get twenty-six feet. And if your roof pitch is less than three and twelve or flat, then you get only twenty-four feet. Again, this is a standard on a relatively flat lot. Again, you get an extra five feet if you're on a really steep slope. Now, how we measure that on a pitched roof, and these are homes actually that have been prior approved by the commission with coastal development permits. Here's a pitch, and it's essentially rise over run determines your pitch. So, in this case, this is probably a three and twelve pitch, three feet and twelve feet. And then, sometimes we get these curved roofs. It makes it a little bit more difficult, but essentially, it's the same. You count the rise over the full length of the run. So, you'd go to the lowest point of the roof to the highest point. And then, in this case, this is probably like a five and twelve pitch. Now, again, and I should have, apologize, I should have included roof decks in this exhibit. But I think the point of this is really that there are some allowances for additional height for appurtenances and architectural features, elevators, chimneys, spires, those kinds of things. And it makes, really, what you do not want is every building maxed out and looking exactly the same at the same height. So, there's some allowances for different types of things, and it makes for a much more varied streetscape. And I love these old buildings, and we don't have any quite like this. But this reminds me of the shopping center that's down by the harbor. It's got some pergolas like this, very similar, which were allowed to go above the height. You could have spires, you can have wind vanes, you can have other architectural features. And again, in residential areas, you can have them, you get an additional three feet, but no more than five percent of the total roof area can have that. So, you can't just cover your roof with these things. And then, the non-residential buildings, you can have up to ten percent of the roof area and maximum of five feet additional height. Now, roof decks are a little bit different. Roof decks are not allowed to go above the height limit, basically, in residential areas. Even the railing has to stop at the maximum height. You're not allowed additional height for a roof deck in residential areas. In commercial areas, you're allowed a forty-two-inch railing. So, anything above that, you can't go any higher. So, it's a little bit of difference between commercial and residential.
John, as far as residential, the homes that have the crow's nest on top, where they built so that they, people can build a little room up and go down their stairs and go out and get a better view. Is that little crow's nest factored in or not? Because it's just...
It used to be, it, it's, prior to my coming here, it was allowed. And you could have that to provide access to a roof deck. And roof decks weren't really very well-designed under the county standards. Frankly, we've got quite a few of those, and the code was changed for roof decks to not allow those. So, essentially, roof decks now have to be stealthy. You can, you're not allowed to see a dog, they call them dog houses, I don't know why they got... So, those types of things are not allowed. You're supposed to hide the stairway as much as possible, you're not supposed to see the railing. They're supposed to be integrated into the roof under the new standards. So, all of our roof decks that are applied for now generally are pretty stealthy. And you can't tell when you look at a building unless somebody's standing up there, or they've got their umbrella up there, you can't tell it's a roof deck. The Dana Point Specific Plan, as I mentioned, this was adopted under the county, and we inherited that, and there's a good portion of the city that still applies to that. As I showed, this house right here was built under the Dana Point Specific Plan. Now, it's governed by the Dana Point Zoning Code. But that is essentially, you take the, the slope of the lot, and you go five feet around the building and measure from grade, and go up, and create an envelope. And so, this, this conformed at the time, which was at that time, a twenty-five, twenty-eight-foot height limit. And so, that's how we measure height. There are not a lot of properties remaining in the Dana Point Specific Plan that are on really steep slope lots like this. So, this condition is, you're probably not going to see that very often, if at all, anymore. The, there are some commercial properties that do use this, though, and they are generally south of, on P, off of PCH, south of town center. That strip down there where you've got the Best Western Hotel, I think it's, used to be Holiday Inn. Those are still subject to this code. And that's why, when you look at that hotel, it's, it's pretty tall and stepping way up. If you measured that under the Dana Point Zoning Code, it wouldn't meet the height standard at all. But the Dana Point Specific Plan, it complies. Then there's the Monarch Beach Specific Plan, which is, also has specific height standards for the residential buildings around the St. Regis. It gives some standards for those on slope lots, which is interesting because there really aren't, I'm not aware of any slope lots in the Monarch Beach area. But the biggest difference with this is that it measures from the midpoint of the roof. So, you've got a roof slope, you cut the, you can have a good half of the roof above the height limit. It's measured from the midpoint of the roof. So, all the new homes that you see that are the new multimillion-dollar homes are going to be built on either side of the St. Regis. They're currently grading those sites. Those height limits, they're all set using this, this standard. So, they all comply with this standard. Luckily, they're relative to Nigell Road, they're graded down. So, still, I think most views are going to be retained as you're driving through there. Or, let's say, from the tennis villas across the way, they can see over that. But it's kind of, it's, this is the only area where you measure the roof right through the middle of it.
John, remember that house we approved recently with the basement and the recording studio downstairs?
Yes.
What, do you remember which category that falls into?
The zoning code, Dana Point Zoning Code. And that was a true basement, as I, yeah, that was a true basement.
It had an extraordinarily tall ceiling, is all, it wasn't, you measure your height there from the ceiling at ten feet, not more than ten feet above the floor of the basement. And so, we started sort of midpoint in the room, middle of the basement, and then went up to the top.
I remember, I remember, it was like, wow.
You know, none of it, none of us, none of us know the gen, the genesis of where the ten-foot, basically, it means if you have a greater than ten-foot-tall ceiling in a basement, you get penalized. It's, there's, I don't, who cares if you have a twenty-foot-tall basement, nobody can see it. But that is what it is.
Maybe they don't want it to convert to another story.
Maybe, it's, yeah, right. Again, let's see, that, those were the residential standards. There is a very specific height limit required under the specific plan for the hotel itself. And the reason it can be thirty feet on one side and seventy-eight on the other is because that's exactly what this, the plan, the development standard stated. You can't read this, I'm sure, but where I'm circling right here, it says, "Nigell Road", the build, maximum building height is thirty feet above Nigell Road, although there was an allowance for an elevator overrun. So, thirty feet here, and then on the downside, seventy-eight feet, max. And so, it's almost as if the, the code was built around the hotel. So, who knows which came first? But it's a very popular building, and people like the resort. But it did, I think the limit was pretty important to be limited from the height of Nigell Road. Now, the Headlands, I, I don't, unless you want me to go into a lot of the detail here, I won't. But just, there are several planning areas that have specific diagrams that show you how you measure height. Some of these are, but they're all measured from finished pads that were part of the original subdivision. They actually graded the whole site, even partially on the commercial and the hotel site. But all the residential homes were graded to specific heights, and there, those building heights are measured from those pads. Now, to go to the Town Center Plan, as you know, I think the, there's a height limit of forty feet for the roof, but there are allowances to go above that. but there are allowances to go above that with certain criteria. But three stories, forty feet, the standards are actually in the, down, the Town Center Plan, which we will be renaming the Landmark District Plan, once the Coastal Commission allows that. It is measured from the level of the sidewalk at the midpoint of the front property line. So here's, here's a project, some of you may recall that April, I think you were on the Planning Commission, Liz, when you approved this building. This is at the corner of Violet Lantern and, and Del Prado. This building is a meridian with lux, here's Killer Dana. So this vacant lot here was approved about eight thousand square feet of commercial on the ground floor with eighteen residential units. The height is measured from the midpoint at the front property line right here. You're allowed to go up forty feet and that's what this building did, forty feet up to here. Now as a result of the sloping topography in Town Center, it's not all flat. What happens is here's the front of the building. So here from the midpoint of the sidewalk, you go up, it's forty feet tall. But then it slopes down to Violet, so along Violet Lantern, it's as much as forty-four feet. Still complies with the overall height standard. But then when you go to the back of the building where the alley is actually, unlike the meridian where the alley's lower, here the alley is higher than the street, so the building, if you measured it there, it would be only thirty-seven feet high. But again, the standard was to measure it from the sidewalk at the front property line. I won't get into too much detail, but there are some other sites that are more complex where you've got more, you've got multiple frontages, you may recall in Majestic. You had a front on Del Prado and you also had a front on PCH. So that really complicates things. Again, there are allowances for certain elements to go above the height limit and it's quite specific as to what they can be. But say mechanical screening for air conditioning units and things like that, air handlers for restaurants, they can be, that screening can go above, there's a maximum forty-two inches as long as it's setback five feet minimum from the edge of the building. There's allowances for roof decks where you can have the railings go above the height. Allowances for rooftop elevators, depending on whether it provides access to a roof deck or just access to the floor below, there's different height allowances for that. And then things like skylights, chimneys, those things, those have minimum amounts that you can go above the height limit. Lastly, there is a Dana Point Harbor revitalization plan area. And in that case, there were very specific height standards for individual buildings. So like the building on the right, this is a section through what they called the boat barn, which is a dry storage facility, and that was allowed to be sixty-five feet in height. So that is, that's the standard when they come in for that building, it can't be any taller than sixty-five feet. This is a three-story building, one of the commercial buildings. And this particular building, it's called Building Six, which would actually house the harbor director's offices on the upper floor. So he needed a good view of the surrounding harbor from that office. And so it allowed this building to go up to fifty-five, fifty-six feet. But most of the buildings are limited to thirty-five to forty-five feet tall. But each building, as you'll see, is, has, has a number and it has its own unique standard. So again, it can be perplexing, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask and I hope that helps.
That was very informative, I, I learned some things. Do the commissioners have any questions?
Is there going to be a test now?
Only for you.
I hope we're all getting a copy of this because we need to memorize it. And I don't think we're memorizing it as we sit here.
Well, some of this is going to be put on the city's website for people to be able to, if they want to understand how we measure height. We'll be creating, essentially it's an electronic handbook that's put on the website for people to look at and understand the particular height standard.
All right, well, go ahead.
I appreciate the, the review very much. Do you know kind of what the purpose is of the, you know, extra steep roof, extra height? What's the logic there? Is it a massing issue, do you think?
I think it's just to allow variety of roof pitch. Because let's say you have a twenty-four foot height limit. Well, people are going to want to maximize their ceiling heights, right?
Right.
So it's going to frankly encourage a lot of flat roofs. So just to have some variety, they said, okay, we'll allow some additional height if you give us some variety in height and roof pitches. So that's, that's the logic, as I see it.
But if it may, it may be even an art of protecting views. Because you imagine if a box obviously is going to have greater massing, it'd be more challenging to see around it, through it, et cetera. But if you put a pitch to something, you can see around either side of the building. It's a little even greater height if you allow people to see around it.
Yeah, and, and I would guess that, you know, you're both right, right? But, I mean, I've noticed that in some of the stuff that, you know, has come to us, there've been some very creative ways to, around that. For example, what I would kind of call the accordion roof.
Yeah.
Right, where they say, hey, it's six and twelve in little minute sawtooth pattern and you can't see around it and you, there's, you know, indistinguishable as a six and twelve roof. Or the, you know, the, the parabolic roof. Hey, a lot of it's less than six and twelve. So I was just wondering if you guys have had any internal discussions about those types of things?
We've definitely had a discussion about the accordion type because we, I do recall a house on Beach Road where they, they utilized that. So it was, the house was like a sawtooth.
Right.
And they got that additional height. But in reality, when you look at it on one side, it looks flat. So we've actually, yeah, we, we're keeping a, a constant list of potential amendments that we want to make to the zoning code when we do zoning code cleanups occasionally. So, and that's one of the items that we've put on our discussion list, definitely.
I think it'll be interesting if you all participate in the charrette that Opticos is going to do because when they came to meet with us initially, they have some interesting thoughts on how you measure height in order to, you can remember, it's a form-based code. So they're very interested in the form of buildings and providing a lot of variety. And sometimes if you just have a maximum height limit, you really restrict the different forms that could happen. And they're very interested in seeing that variety. So there'll be some additional, I think, discussions as we embark on the Doheny Village Plan relative to that discussion.
And, and one thing that we've discussed internally is that if the result of some of these charrettes and the Doheny Plan comes up with, you know, really great standards that we like, we could potentially apply those standards in other areas of the city. So that's something we would be considering too.
So I have two, two cents, okay? One of my two cents is that the, those, going to six and twelve, just on a conventional house, right? Because I looked at this in my own house and created issues. Going to six and twelve drives you much higher than two feet over rather than having, let's say, three and twelve. So my two cents would be that if you're going to go steep like a six and twelve or something like that, hey, maybe it's more appropriate to be up at thirty or something like that. And that would encourage more variety, if that's what you're looking for. If you're looking for, hey, we want to keep it twenty-eight max and, so it just depends. But, but that's not much of a, you don't get much bump height-wise for going extra steep. It's, you're fighting against yourself. And then my other two cents would be, so this is the handout that's given out to the, to the public and I got it today. And it says, max height, twenty-eight feet, footnote four. And this is for most zoning districts, probably in the, the traditional zoning code. And then it says, okay, see the footnote four? And then the footnote four says, subject to measurement, design criteria, section nine point oh five, point one one zero A. And nowhere on here does it say, it, it would be easy to add, and I think we should, twenty-four max for flat, twenty-six for three and twelve and twenty-eight for six and twelve. Because it's just, it's a handy place to have it, right? It'd be easy for, for applicants to come in and say, hey, this is what I'm, this is what I'm hitting at. Because most people aren't building six and twelve roofs, but they think they can get twenty-eight feet.
So keep it simple for the stupid.
Yes. The stupid like me.
That's a good suggestion. And as John creates this presentation into a, a handout, it could go very easily with that document and we can make it a bit more user-friendly and get it all on the website as well as have hard copies at the permit center.
Can I go, I'm sorry. Can I go back to the boat barn? Because that was, that was very controversial in this town. If, as I remember correctly, as we just said, it went up to sixty-five feet. But then when it got the roof structures on it, I think it went to seventy-two. And that ultimately, the whole thing blew up over the roof structures. And so that was clearly going to be, was not going to be a residential building. But I'm sure there are people out there building residential up to that, are they not? Or are they, they being good citizens in the community?
Yeah, no.
Are they trying to wind it with a little hair, a little hair, a little air and ultimately they get a little bit more height?
No.
Okay.
I would say no. And, and just relative to that boat storage building, you're correct, there was, your, your recollection, it was a little bit higher as approved by the city. But when it went to the Coastal Commission, it got lowered to sixty-five. So now the rumor now is that they may not even build that building due to the cost. And they might be looking at some other solutions for boat storage. We haven't seen those yet though.
Interesting.
I do have one more question, sorry. Story polls, do you guys, when and if do you require story polls?
Good question. Story polls are required when you're asking for three stories in the additional height. And, and that, that is actually codified. It has been the Planning Commission's policy to require story polls in the case where you're asking for a variance for building height.
And, and confirm that it's, it's codified for three stories of residential.
Of residential.
In those steep.
Yeah, on those steep lines, it's, it's codified in the, for residential structures that are three feet tall, three stories tall on steep lots. And, but it's just a policy to require staking in the case where you're asking for a height variance for a residential structure. But again, we haven't seen any requests for those variances in a long time.
How long do those polls have to be up?
I believe the standard is seven days. Is it?
Seven, seven days prior to the hearing.
Seven days prior to the hearing and then they have to remain until they're, it's approved. Yeah, that's right.
Or unless it's a safety hazard? Because in certain, there was one project where they came down fairly quickly.
Well, that was, that was on the commercial side where in Town Center. But those, there's not that specific codified standard in Town Center.
Okay. Right, and in further discussions with Roma after that, their sense and direction was that a, a model or a, blinking on the word, on the term, was...
Computer-generated?
Computer-generated, simulated. Either way, was a, a better, was more helpful to policymakers and the community to understand sort of the context of the building within the, the adjacent properties, you know, versus staking. Staking big buildings like that, it, it's really difficult to kind of see what that building's really going to, to look like. So whether it's a physical model or a 3D model, and that is the approach that we're moving toward in, in Town Center unless a variance is being requested.
I've, having worked in Laguna Beach where just about every project has to be staked, it's relatively easy, but it's expensive. It's about a thousand dollars per pole. And so typically, a typical house that's going to be staked is going to have twenty to thirty poles. It's crazy how expensive it is. But again, and it's, it's reasonable to expect somebody to be able to erect story polls if it's going to be twenty-five, thirty feet tall. But once you start getting quite a bit above that, especially in a very urban setting, it's just not practical. You can't put story polls up in a Town Center that are forty feet plus tall. It's just, it's not really physically safe to do that.
And there really isn't a, visually when you're looking up at something that's, you know, forty or sixty feet in the air, and, and you can't really get an idea of what that's going to look like. And it's not going, going to be a square box. It's, you know, there, it's going to be some articulation and, and step backs and whatever. And so story polls don't really tell the story as much as a 3D model does. You can get a much better visual understanding of how it's going to affect the surrounding properties. So yeah, I agree that the 3D model approach is probably better. Okay, any more questions? If not, we'll move on to, thank you very much, that was very helpful. I, I think staff did an excellent job. It's always good to have those, these refresher courses for some of us old timers and, and some information for the, you know, people that are just coming on, onboard because it is a very difficult, perplexing topic. So I thank you for that. We'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Murphy, you want, any comments?
Nope. Very enlightening. We appreciate it. We appreciate everybody who had to stay and miss dinner with their family so we could be in line.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, I just, I was able to attend the, the Doheny Village presentation. I thought the staff did a great job and so did the consultants with a very diverse crowd with lots of varying opinions. So look forward to seeing what happens down there.
Commissioner McCann.
Just appreciative, appreciative of all the effort and feedback from staff and, and, you know, picking up the phone to answer questions or whatever.
Commissioner Claus.
Just a reminder that this coming Sunday will be the last of the summer concerts at Heritage Park. And this, this past week was, was grand and hopefully you'll all come down to see the last one.
Is the last one the Beach Boys?
No, they already had the Beach Boys.
Oh, I missed that one.
Yeah. They went out drinking and didn't show up. No, we, I think the Beach Boys were earlier, I think, yeah. And I'm sorry, I should, I should have come in knowing who it was, but they always, the last one is always the best.
I too went to the Doheny Town Hall forum, whatever you want to call it. And that was quite interesting, as the vice chair said, some divergent opinions on varying uses in, in the area. And also, my husband told me I have to mention the Emergency Expo that occurred since he's on CERT team. And it was, according to him and my daughter who volunteered, it was a huge success. And so hopefully they'll have it again. And with that, we'll move to adjournment. The next regular meeting of the Planning Commission will be held on Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, beginning at six PM or soon thereafter in the City Council Chamber located at three, three, two, eight, two, Golden Lantern, Suite two ten, that's right here, Dana Point, California. Thank you.